Chair.
So planning board meeting of fifteen April twenty twenty five will start with roll call. Duncan Lewski.
Here.
Paul Clark.
Here.
Probably Paul Masada, he is coming as. Great change.
Here.
Jack for chair.
Here.
Matt Heffron.
Here.
And I'm here, Jamie Pennington is not here.
Here. Did you hear me? Here?
Uh, one public hearing this evening, uh, five seventy, five seventy two Merrimack Street. With, uh, two items on the agenda, one the courts and lanes special permit, uh, the other the subdivision.
Good evening, thank you. Jeff Broloffs, counsel to the App Kim. Uh, I'm hoping Andy can pull the slides, thank you. Um. What I'd like to do is just quickly walk through, uh, what we've done since our last meeting in March. Um, we did submit some revised materials with them in the convention, we had a sidewalk, so, and if you could just go to the next slide, we'll just walk through that. Through the, the events, the different subminerals quickly. So last meeting here was March fifth. March nineteenth, we came before you, uh, received an endorsement of an A and R plan, which was the way of creating lots one to four. You'll remember that the applications in front of you now are to split lot four into lots four A and four B with a court. March twenty sixth, we submitted revised landscape plans, those were reflecting discussions that we had with the tree ward and the surrounding thing. Um, as well as making some changes to the tree species at his request. Uh, you'll see these revised details on the plans in a few minutes. On the twenty sixth, we also submitted revised civil plans, uh, from Steve Sawyer, who's here this evening. Uh, as well as a letter from him summarizing the revisions, uh, those, the revisions were primarily responsive to feedback that we had. Uh, received from you at our first meeting, from city staff, from peer reviewer. Um, they include modifying the drive entry to put a sidewalk in front of the driveway, catch baiting in the driveway. Bar service and other utilities relocated, et cetera. We can go through those if you want in detail this evening. Um, April ninth, we submitted, uh, further revised plans, and that actually was the result of. A, um, a sidewalk with conservation commission, which had been meant to put in this chronology. Uh, before that, and during that sidewalk, uh, there's some requests for changes, uh, in the area of the site. Down from lot four B, um, where we had proposed some work within a twenty-five foot buffer, so I'll get to those revisions in a few minutes. But that was the basis for those revisions there. Um, the same revisions were carried forward to the landscape plans, and it was submitted architectural, like, very, very negligible changes on that. Uh, April eleventh, you received a memo from staff, which included some proposed, some draft, I should say, draft findings. As well as some special conditions, uh, for your consideration. Uh, April fifteenth, we received, uh, DEP technical comment. You'll remember we're in front of the conservation commission too, so it was important to get those. Uh, they were pretty benign, uh, they weren't requesting any changes to the plans, so that was reassuring. Uh, they asked for some additional information that will be dealing with in front of the conservation commission. Uh, the commission meeting was last night. Um, the feedback we got, uh, was basically, they weren't expecting to be, uh, requesting any project revisions. There's some additional information, details, for example, about how we're going to be maintaining the conservation, conservation areas and the like. Which pertain to their proceedings, but not these, so we don't think there are going to be any changes from that process. That would be required in the plans that are in front of you. Um, so we're hoping actually that we can close this hearing tonight if things go well. And then, uh, tonight, I uploaded one proposed edit that I had to one of the special conditions that. Steph drafted up for you to consider, pretty minor, but we can get to that later. These are just here to get you reoriented to the site, if you wanted to look at those, he's here. This is Danny. Um, so this is the overview after our first meeting, uh, I got some feedback from the staff. Or wanted to get a better handle on these sort of overall projects, you'll remember that. Uh, the applications in front of you are only for a portion of this larger project, the larger project. Has been presented to the commission in its entirety because the resource area is extended to these other lots. So this is just an image, it's a excerpt of the landscape plan that was presented to, uh, the conservation commission. Um, just while we have that up. So the bottom areas here are lots four A and four B, four A being in the front, four B in the back, this is the court. So those are the topics that I, are the subject of your, the applications in front of the planning board. Is that the lots or A and R lots, conforming A and R lots, but we do have landscape plans that have been fully designed. Uh, this is the, these are two lots on the Spalfer, one, uh, lot on Merrimack. Uh, but I didn't want you to see that there's a, there's a comprehensive plan. Uh, associated with all five lots, landscaping, coordination, utilities, and. Slide. So just zooming into the lots that are at issue with you. This is the excerpt from the revised landscape plan, you'll see that we've identified. Street tree that we're going to be protecting during construction, we've got a proposed street tree. Uh, we changed some of the species of these trees in the front, they were not street trees, they're just on the private property. But Mr. Anderson is uncomfortable with moldy or imposing there. Next slide. And then getting into the civil plan, so Steve's here, if you want to get into the details, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review his letter, the plan, I say relatively minor. Um, and if you go forward, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit quickly the, the more significant revisions, one. Uh, one of them is that. The recommendation of staff is required by zoning warnings. We are now providing the detail for a, uh, to extend the sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk. Uh, across the frontage to meet the existing sidewalk, so that'll be new sidewalk. Um, Andy, next slide please. And then down here, so this is the, the rear residence on lot four B. And if there, you'll, you may remember, there's a drainage easement that the city has, some drainage infrastructure down here. That discharges to a steel basin and then ultimately into the wetlands. Um, during the conservation commission's sidewalk, uh, they questioned why we were grading within a twenty-five foot notice disturbed zone there. Um, they have expressed the preference that we not give any grading there. So, uh, we took another look at the plan, we actually adjusted the wetland line there because we realized that. Um, the original line had shown, uh, part of the stormwater infrastructure as being a wetland, which it's not. I think the commission agrees with that now, so we adjusted that line. Uh, Steve redesigned the grading in the set, in this area to avoid the twenty-five foot notice served zone down here. Uh, he added a low, uh, landscape wall, it's not a structural wall, it's like, I think, top height of three feet. So these are primarily just of regrading adjustments, uh, pretty minor. And then, you know, across the project site, it's pretty minor detail, but those have been incorporated into the plan set. Presented to the planning board as well as the conservation commission, um, and these revisions were, were well received at the meeting last night. Okay, getting to the landscape plan, we are still planning to, uh, plant within that area. To restore the natural vegetation in the area, it's primarily long now. Um, and that's, so that's, so there's an area of updated landscaping that is reflected on the landscape plan as well as the changes that are. Reflected up in the front, the street trees, and then. On the slide, but you'll remember that the landscape plans have. The, uh, specific species that are being proposed, accounts, the time, and all those details are included in the landscape. And my fantasy is finding what we're. Architectural plans, I have them here just in case you want, if you have any questions related to them, they're basically the same design that you saw at the first meeting. So I'm thinking of these, I've got them here in case you want to get into it. It's here tonight. And that's it, the, um, so the remainder of this, I have slides from the previous set. If you're interested in going back to any of those, I wanted to make them handy for the discussion. Just turn it back to the board, if you want Steve to come up and just sort of walk through some of his changes, happy to do that, but he did outline them in the letter that he provided.
Just for the record, I haven't, I haven't listened to the conservation commission meeting last night, I just wanted to. Roll up that. The conservation commission, although they continue to hear and they were looking for a sufficient official, like, she that demonstrated the boundaries of the air to be, you know, preserved. Like, a lot of the. I don't know that, for, like, what's coming, well, the concerns we always have is, thank you, the plan, it's in the diet. The A set, it's, it's, so. We don't hear, essentially, the conservation, but in this next back, these, like, you've done, the areas that Jeff mentioned down here was here in concern that.
Why don't we open it up for initially? The rule.
Um, I think you mentioned, it was a trip, a bonus change to a condition?
Yes, so if you want to, in the staff memo that you received, um, I guess it was last week. Uh, there was a proposed, uh, or draft special conditions for each of the two decisions, one being the subdivision approval, the other one being a special permit decision. We're fine with what they presented there. Um, I did send, I did, I uploaded it in Word two today, if that's easier, yeah, I, I did it in the subdivision application. So it was one of the subdivision special permit conditions presented by staff. And I had one minor editorial change to the end of that one condition, so you don't want it in there. Uh, yes, in the subdivision.
Oh, in the subdivision?
Yes.
No, that's not right, no.
Yeah. And I, I did it in only in one because the special condition related to that. Yeah, there you go. So that was, I wondered if it would come up as a red line, so the subdivision. Condition number two, it's in your staff memo, top page four. Uh, the redlining didn't come through, but I can tell you exactly what I added because. It was just the language at the end of the last sentence of that condition.
That's where you're part.
Yeah, oh, there you go. If you want to zoom into that, um, the print, and I'll just explain why I did this. So the draft condition ended with the requirement that the court maintain privately. In accordance with the homeowners association agreement. I included some additional language because I'm not sure there's going to be a homeowners association agreement, there are different ways to. Buying the requirements to maintain these things privately, they can be cross usements, they can be, uh, common driveway maintenance agreement, there are different formats. So we haven't chosen exactly which one we're going to use it. Um, I actually don't think it's going to be a homeowner association agreement, so I just added a couple other. Formats and then said, or similar documentation binding a lot of, or, or being reported at the registry prior to issuing that. So that's our only proposed change.
Any other questions to come? I have one quick question. Uh, landscape. Does, I'm, I'm interested in, in the landscape, street.
I'm sorry, street.
Street edge.
Street edge, yeah.
It's not clear to me what the scale is of that planting and whether it eventually becomes a, a visual buffer. Since there are barrages located on, you know, this, this property and some of the other.
Yeah.
What's the anticipated scale of that landscape that one is controlling?
Great question, our landscape architect is on the Zoom with us tonight, I believe, Elise, are you here? Answer my question in this.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yes, the idea, so there are two, um, large canopy trees. Which are oaks, uh, planted at either end, uh, of what you're seeing there, and then the shrubs, um, in between are, uh. Meant to grow into a buffer, the purple are, um. Lilac and the green, uh, further down are, um. Let's see, rhododendron, I believe, uh, which will grow to be an evergreen, sort of. The idea that it would be a loose hedge, not like a wall of arborvitae, but it would provide an evergreen screen to screen that sort of parking and garage area. And as well, uh, as you can see, sort of to the left of that driveway area, there is, there are more lilacs. Um, and then sort of below that, between the court and the parking area, there are some. Sort of small trees and lower shrubs to also screen that.
And it is true, language in your agreement to the homeowners that, that landscape buffer will be preserved. It's on their property.
Well, that's on, uh, that is on lot four A. Um, so the way I see it is this is a special permit, it's going to run with the plan. Typically, um, in that context, because you're approving a particular landscape plan. See that as the, you know, a binding set of plans on the property, if somebody wants to go in there and do something materially different.
I'm just, I'm asking all of this because of the orientation of some of the houses to the street.
Yeah.
And general comments that this site is kind of forming a gateway. Off the bricks, so I think it's important to. Those kinds of issues, that's the deal.
We totally appreciate that, and we feel like we've been very sensitive to that reality, yes, yeah.
I do have one question.
What?
I know we, we talked at one point.
What's up?
An existing drainage between lot four A and. And.
Lot three.
Yeah. Talked about how we have to handle, and it, it does not necessarily cover it in here, we say storm drainage by the city, and then we say the private way by. Artists, how, how would you? How would you categorize that?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Steve come up and answer that, our civil engineer. Um, there is a distinction between the, the city's drain line that really, that their drainage easement comes right underneath to court. That's different than the topic you're talking about, which I think is a steward.
No, it's a drain.
It's a drain line, so.
So I think in the demolition plan, we've done. In the demolition plan, we talked about, uh. If, if you want, I can load that sheet if that's. Um, you need that, I can point to it here.
And I, I think if you go to that slide, it might be more zoomed in even.
Yeah.
I think it's this.
Okay, um, it's actually if you pan. Pan towards and, or pan the top, slide, slide the slide down. So you can see here, this is, this drain here, that the one where you're referencing, yeah. So that's an old, that was the old existing drain that, that serviced the drainage at the, at the, you know, roundabout. And, uh, they actually have the history of this from John Eric, but, uh. The original plans of the roundabout were to redo the, redo all the drainage and continue to pipe the water down and pipe it underneath the building. Um, I think it was Stan Lynch and John Erickson, this is a good. So they actually, if they made a field change, basically it was a field change, uh, during construction, the city came in. And if you pan back down to, uh, pin down into, back to, uh, Merrimack. They extended, they, they extended the pipe, the, the city drain down to this drain, they'll dug it, installed it. Turn ninety, they ran it down along the edge of the property. Just to take it, you know, take the, the drainage away from the center of the property, plus having existing drain. Or, or the drain running underneath the building is never going to be maintained, um, so that's the history of that, so we're adding. We're adding this, uh, hard drainage for the court. It's all privately maintained, and then our overflow, we're tying into this one here. Actually, the, the pipe came, came down, I know, I guess they were trying to run it around or something, but it came down and made a bend. And they never installed the manhole at the bend. Um, and so what we will be, typically you do that, so we're actually going to be installing a manhole at the bend, and that's where we're going to tire it.
So then that would be abandoned, the other?
The other one's going to be abandoned in place, yeah.
You don't need access to it, or, at one point we were talking about, how would you get access to it?
Yeah, uh, that, that's.
Solve it.
Yeah, that is completely abandoned in, abandoned place, uh, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Any other question?
Uh, following up on that, Steve. The, uh, the erosion control plan says it's going to be removed, it can be moved or can be adapted.
Uh, any areas underneath paving, you'll get.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, there's been some new information submitted, so I'll ask for a public comment.
We have.
We'll close the public comment there. Um, just ask for, for any other detailed questions or comments, and I guess. Maybe I would, if we could review the conditions.
Yeah, and I can actually, uh. We had provided and, uh, just compared to the survey in the evening, but the, uh. What to the subdivision waivers.
So why don't we take the, one at a time, yes, let's do the courts and lanes. Which one? Do we end up with your conclusion there, and then we'll.
So we had, um, put it again, for its consideration, you, you should be tweeting here, uh, these are graph. That's, it's very nice. All this.
Those all look fine to me, I see.
We then had this. Well, we're all technically. Some proposed conditions. Street being sidewalk, which is a pretty, well, they've been writing to, so, this one is addressing a condition one, aside from addition and the continuation of it on the driveway. Uh, we talked earlier, um, what is street tree, um. The permits. You know, of course, it's just to get there.
So the, the conditional approval, uh, related to the conservation mission. That would come up under the subdivision.
Uh, the, sorry, you're talking about the line of the Jeff. You're talking about.
Yeah, well, we, we, we talked about relative to the, the open issues.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that, I.
We will approve contingent on their satisfaction with it.
Uh, just provided they doesn't cause any change.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it. But it's, it won't be necessary because in the back, yeah. Usually it's resolved with, uh, however, why it's. So we can add that to, uh, this one. We just got here that this is.
So that would fall under courts and. Lanes, special permit?
Uh, I mean, technically speaking, that plan should be what, oh, I guess they're.
So does anyone have any additions?
Just wondering, I mean, why memorialize your concern about the, uh, the streetscape being preserved. I know that Jeff said that you could interpret the special permit as requiring, but I think it'd be hard to enforce it.
Explosive language by the landscape would be made.
Well, some, or the untainted landscape, but not the specific ones. Yeah.
Or about it, or.
Yeah, I just, I just, let me just ask the question, if the concern is focused on this vegetation between the street and the first residence. It'd be nice to maybe limit it to the special condition to that.
That's all.
So we have two additions, two additions.
Reddish, never skip.
Any other comment? This, I will ask for a motion to.
Make motion? To, uh, as a single motion for both. Motion to approve the special program application, the subdivision approval application. With the special conditions noted in the staff report, just viewed and revised tonight, and with the two additional. Special conditions. And that would be forty.
Are you combining?
Well, that's how the motion was.
Second.
If you're going to take a roll call vote, apparently it's. Uh, Brian.
Yes.
Dan Lewski.
Yes.
Paul Clark.
Yes.
Paul Masada.
Yes.
Rick Cantor.
Yes.
Tom Coughlin, yes, Jack.
Uh, yes.
Great, thank you, appreciate your time and efficiency. One of the more efficient proceedings I've been in in the.
Mm-hmm.
Pointing the company, it's nice.
Good job, Jeff.
Yeah, right. Thank you, guys, it's been a good.
Good to see you.
On to general business, um. That, yes, the comment.
Yeah.
I would ask that they delay approval. Paul's.
Um. Just going to think, Andy, you kind of. Put comments on the. Um, if I could just briefly, because I've not had a chance to read today, of course, this is a few, but just. I'm doing it out. But, um, this is the zoning change for the flood zones, I just want to pull up this screen briefly, uh, what's happening, so. Like, what you mentioned, what, we have now two zoning amendments we're going to be taking, we're trying to get that in a, back. To digress, these zoning amendments. To maintain with the national flood insurance program, which we need to maintain compliance with some. So this is basically best practices in, in the flood, flood, the two, the red, the limit. I, um, you know, basically expect some, hopefully in exchange of, or, you know, getting resources, um, and, you know, insurance and whatnot for locals, so. Pretty common, um, you probably, you know, I've worked in, uh, Massachusetts, you know, that's been the case, so. At any rate, um, these are the aerial photographs, just showing tile numbers, if you were users, for those, and your base or the tile were affected. Um, I put together some materials, I'll push up to you, and it should be the subject of our second zoning amendment, what we had that night, uh, eight seven. Uh, we'll get the standard verdicts, I think, for, for you and the chair, playing, you know, the council, but if we look at the signage first, and then go to this. This is largely housekeeping in nature because we're really required to do most part, um, I did have to go back and put them over a little bit of language where they go, um. It's not a very efficient process, like, you know, that way that. And communities doing some bad. Says, um, but. In every case, you have the technical term, you're in, so, uh, you'll see the language you ordered itself. If you weren't knowing, just briefly, for here, just you an idea from this, um, diagram, which I can't, and there were numbers. Well. We have these PDF posters online, but we're also. Which is the dynamic mapping, we can kind of do it now. So, um, we're just, we're just turning off the bar, so you can kind of see that the, the two layers, um, being, uh, um, not being very efficient, hasn't really pushed out many progress. The layer that's merged, you only do together, so we, we're going to make sure that those are clean, um, when we call the new, uh, layer, so. When you're looking at our line map, you have to use that. Website, uh, you'll have to turn on the old ones for it to see we use these gray cells here, but they have. Website, uh, you'll have to turn on the old ones for it to see these, these gray cells here, but they have not actually made any changes. Uh, because it's a little confusing, the way that the management, they, they push out when, when the day comes, July. So we have not been able to get that clean data. So you'll see it in there, you'll use multiple layers in order to see some of the older tiles where they didn't make any changes. So you'll see kind of an interesting transition line right here where they're going to be together. But in essence, that, the yellow ones are the ones where they've made some adjustments, um, right ones, the ones that they have not made any. Um, and then in a memorandum that, um, it's from the county, you and, um, it's the same graphic. Um, just trying to illustrate a little bit, which is a couple of. Or what the old, uh, people were back to showing this is. You've got a good idea of this. Down here, the, just showing a little expansion of that and the new plan. Um, I basically just, you know, to kind of pan around, show a few pilots that are sort of notable from, you know, city perspective. There's really not a significant adjustment, a lot of it goes on, you see some small stories of adjustment. Something significant. Um, the other one down here is spring lane, uh, this is the water bridge. Um, and so the, uh, this is the, all right down there, this is actually a, so. Anyway, those are the two ones that kind of stood out on the map. Um, there's a couple of text changes that require to comply with the government and all of you peruse those, some of them, um, you know, are efficient, a little less efficient, but they, they do also. Obviously, it's. So with that, um, just letting you know that that's coming. Be the download.
Pretty significant changes downtown?
No, actually, so just to show on this map right here, so the, the downtown, uh, where you look at. An annual change in that area, they basically got that same. You know, the one that's created to the same line and go to the same.
So does this mean that, you know, really surprised that there's no changes on the coastal, you know, in drop of flats? So does this mean that all the changes basically relate to riverine flooding or the coastal flooding?
Yes. I don't, I can't speak for, you know, he was. You know, sorry, back. Because I have to see that. It's sort of the, the turtle, it would look more sensitive to these things, right? So it's easier to see we have the rain part being addressed, if there's anything new right now on this, that's your always talking about here. Yeah, and I did, uh, I did mention this. In the memo I tried to illustrate as well, I'm going to. But, um, the, uh, um, just the sort of differences, the downtown. So just wanted to point out the difference because we're, we're talking in the future about flooding conditions getting worse on the coast. Silver rise and things like that. Just to illustrate a little bit of that, that we, we are, I think that's less important than realizing that there's something we need to prepare for. Um, and so when you see the whole sort of. Areas, you know, the river. Based on existing, you know, matters. And then you have the sort of seal rise, um, you know, projection going inland, giving an idea of things that might, you know, pushing apart, pushing it way back up over, you know, 2070, 2080, you know, up there. Pushing it way back up, Merrimack Street and Marcus Square. So, um, that's kind of the idea. I, I think it's less important, the debate over exactly. So this way, but we do hope some threats, well, the threat and that'll be an issue. And so, uh, you know, people may come back with, uh, updates to this area, but it's on this, this, uh, to go around. So just showing you this, just to show sort of the flat after area that we'd be looking at, that is down the road. You've got an idea of the planning respect, you know, we talk with the council, understand, you know, those work.
So I'm looking at my member of the city, these not all.
Yes, you're being active. Yeah, to me, yeah, uh, we were, we were having a quick round of discussion, debate about, I, I wasn't happy with the fact that he was, wasn't able to provide us the clean data. So we're trying to just clean it up, make kind of make it as soon as possible, even the fact that the data hasn't emerged yet. So finding easier time, finding the preliminary plans with preliminary data on it, then you can be actual final ones, which is odd, because those are the ones they're going to be pointing to right now. Um, so yeah, we got to go digging to get those. We've also posted the PDFs, which the old school version on our website, um, and they have a couple versions that we needed to read, but, um, at the end of the day, it's that we want my back to be usable because it's really hard to enter on a PDF like a parent. We really do, and we have to use it as the zoning maps. So we actually use local layers in our great practice system to see if some of these are sort of zoning like that, uh, you know, sort of user. Um, you, uh, so, uh, may say.
So is the, is the sign regulation, is that like saying that we've seen before?
Yes, sorry. Just a couple of. And they end up paying to do that, yeah. Sponsor and incorporate, but it doesn't take feedback. You need feedback that they don't, they didn't. You know, so then maybe, if you want to. If, or they say that, uh, we have not.
You would have some advanced notice on.
That's what we decided, yeah. So you have at least a week to review, you know, any sort of adjustment language that might be in there. Um, kind of pushing like a color coding or especially if you see easily where they are. But, um, yeah, and again, I just also have to be there. Um, although, you know, we haven't been coming here, we were looking more clean up in certain areas, in publications related to the zoning and the signage. Um, there's sort of free, free speech, ever, you know, aspect of the sign. It is so, um, how that fits in there, um, we thought was important. Certainly back, whether it's.
It looks like that's all we have on this one?
I think.
Sorry.
Hey, hey, guys, real quick, um, just to let you know from a Zoom meeting, and if it's important that, say, some people are attending that way, it's really hard to hear Andy for most of the presentation. For whatever reason, his, his access to the microphone seems to be compromised. I can hear basically everybody else.
Charlie, can I ask, it might be my bad. My laptop screen is up and I'm wondering if it's blocking the direct line of sight from my voice to the owl. Is that any better at all?
It is a lot better. Yeah, that's a lot better, so.
I will start doing the meeting with my laptop screen as low as possible. So thank you for letting me down. I think that might have overjacked the background getting at last time. Yeah.
A couple of guys, I, I, so it seems as though I can hear most of the comment from the audience. Yeah, speakers here.
Yeah, it must be there's the. All right, thank you, that's all.
No problem.
For our new members of the audience, we, we had one public here. See, that, that was closed about 20 minutes ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're doing tonight is just.
If you.
We just met.
Uh, which meeting?
Yelling.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, another division of the city, yeah, yeah. This is playing, playing board meeting. Yeah, yeah. There are a lot of city meetings, unfortunately.
That was very interesting.
We love to see the interest.
It looks like a tough crowd.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm glad I don't live right on Merrimack. Thank you so much.
Okay, there are no other items. I will. Motion to.
Second.
Third.
All called out.
Yes.
Jen Boosfield.
Yeah.
All the part. Charlie Thomas Donner.
Yes.
Rick Tanger.
Yes.
Prepare. And that's bringing.
Yes.
And I am also.
Sure.